So, hey everybody, I'm going to go ahead and call us to order at BUHS number six for October 16, 2017 at 7:01 PM. And first thing on our agenda is the clerk's report and the approval of the minutes. And again, I want to thank Bob for stepping up and doing the minutes at our last meeting. Is there any -- is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, corrections, changes that need to be made to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, can they probably say aye?
Aye.
Closed or pledged? Okay. Communications, is there any communications? Yeah, Sean?
I would just like to make sure that everybody was aware of the fact that on October 11th, there was a front page second, second article about Kevin O'Donnell. And it was really, really nice. So, he was awarded the 2017 Yale Educator Award for his math teaching here for so many years. And in the article, he mentions a couple of things which I'd like to just briefly touch on. He did talk about the students' hours lost due to the conflicts of extracurricular activities. And he expressed hope, this was from the June 6 meeting when he came here to express his concern to the board. So, he expressed at that time his hope that there would be a restoration of contact time with the needs created by expanding curricular needs. So, I thought that was pretty eloquently said by him and, you know, now he's gone, he's no longer here. And then, my other thought is, in retrospect, because he obviously is a world-class teacher, in retrospect, perhaps we missed an opportunity when the possibility arose to have Kevin as the math department chair. So, those are my personal feelings. I personally was always extremely pleased with what he did for the math department, specifically the young program. And so, a little bit of, this is Grady one, and a little bit of feeling of, well, maybe we missed, maybe we missed an opportunity and a little bit of a feeling of regret that he didn't, he wasn't able to fulfill perhaps to his full potential here because of circumstances that he was stopped. So, and we could be aware of that in the future, make sure that, you know, a world-class teacher does get everything afforded to them. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sean. Any other communications for the clerk's report? All right, seeing none. All right, recommendations of groups and individual visitors. And this is a little different for us that we actually have visitors. So, if I could ask the visitors to maybe kind of from my left over introduce yourselves and while you're here, would that be good?
I'm Tom Costello, and we're here with Adam Wade on behalf of Team Tenny. Team Tenny is a corporation committed to the restoration of the stadium. And we're here to begin a collaborative process with the board to ensure that is done. And we appreciate the opportunity to attend.
Hello, my name's Amara Langsdorf, and I'm student teaching right here at BAMS in a seventh grade social studies classroom. And I came because I heard that there would be a decision about Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day. And I wanted to weigh in on that. I see some looks going around as if to say, is that happening tonight? Which I am now wondering.
My name is Kelly Jono, and I teach third grade at Academy.
Well, welcome all. I'm thinking maybe we could change up our agenda a little bit and address our visitors first and then go into our regular board business. So, Mr. Costello, if you would, if you have some sort of presentation or specific comments you'd like to make?
What would you like me to do?
What works for you, Ian? Wherever each comfortable, wherever the board's comfortable. Okay. That sounds good. Right down there, sounds great.
First day of fall, but certainly is nice and warming here. Thanks for an opportunity to visit with you. You all know of the stadium and its history a little bit. Our organization is formed to collaborate with the board to ensure that good decisions are made. We think the good decision is to restore that facility. And we've been meeting a few times and got some ideas how we can, we can help see that happen. And my interest is try to participate as much as I can. Prior to the 28th of September, we were unaware that any decision had been reached about whether it would be restored or whether it be demolished. And I was interested to see where it was going to go because to do so, it would take analysis, a financial analysis, and also other kinds of analysis. And it appeared from our participation in that meeting and from the minutes of it that a decision has been reached to demolish that stadium. And if that is, that is case, then we're very saddened and we're anxious to do what we can to try to persuade the board that that's not the proper decision. Now, there is some data out there. Most of it's very old. And the data addresses the cost of destroying the stadium, which is a significant number, and also the cost of renovating the stadium, also a significant number, but not terribly far apart. Now, the figures are rather old, and they haven't been updated, and some of it's scribbled in handwriting. And before a decision can be reached one way or the other, we respectfully submit that there should be a careful analysis of those two financial possibilities. And then, if there is, if there is a difference in there, then we're anxious to participate in some fashion to make up that difference. And I think there's a great deal of support in the public to make that happen. And we ain't that smart. Someone's been around for a long time, maybe too long, but we are committed to very hard work. And we have a little record among our people of working hard and collaboratively to make positive things happen. So, we're anxious to do that. We're anxious that, that we don't think from our review that there has been a decision by this board to demolish that. And that the decision implicit or stated at the finance committee that it has been, and the minutes indicate that we're going to demolish it unless Team Tenny comes up with the money to restore it. And we don't think that decision has been made to demolish it. And therefore, we submit that there should be an informed, careful process to do that, and we'd like to participate in making that happen.
Well, and I'm just --
Now, let me just say one other thing.
Oh, sorry, sure.
There's a, this is the first time we've had a chance to speak with public, you know, and we want to be open and we want to be, we want to commit to a collaborative process. We want to commit our resources and our energy to doing it. But there's been nevertheless, as things often happen, some discussion outside the public realm. And I'm anxious that that discussion be open and straightforward, and there be no insinuations or any threats to any people involved in our operation. We want to approach this in a positive way. And we're here tonight really to kind of get acquainted. In my vision, I'd like to get acquainted with those who are going to be my friends and then work together and others. My hope is that we'll be able to work together and get a good result.
That's good. And I think I would like that maybe if the building, the finance building committee, maybe the administration could kind of let us know where we're at?
I would just like to say that where we are right now is we have discussed this in finance in the context of the budget season coming up. And every year when we put our budget together, we also look at and update our long-term capital plan. So, that's the context of why it has surfaced. And of course, the fact that something needs to be done with that if it's going to live again or if it's going to be replaced because it doesn't meet ADA standards and, you know, something, something needs to be done relatively soon. So, every year in October, November, when we put our budget together, if we're going to take on a project like that, we have to put that in the, in the budget, so to speak. I don't, I know that there are opinions about which direction to go. I also, it should be clear that it's not strictly how much does it cost to take it down, how much does it cost to leave it? But there's also the long-term plan for it. And I'll let the administration speak to that, but the long-term plan for the campus and utilization of our limited field space. This campus is built between kind of the river and the mountain, so to speak, and there is not a lot of flat ground to utilize. And over the years, as the nature of high school athletics has changed, there are different needs for different field space. So, that's a key thought that enters our mind in addition to, it's going to cost a fair amount of money to do either. No question about that.
Do what?
It's going to cost a fair amount of money to do either, take it down or leave it up. So, it's not like, do we want to spend any money or not? It's going to be, we're going to spend some money, and how does it, how does it fit into the puzzle of our entire future for our fields? And I don't know if Steve would.
Yeah, maybe just a little bit. I mean, as we're looking at this, you know, we're looking at shifting demographic in terms of, you know, the increase in women's sports at BUHS. There was a lot more women's sports. We're looking at changing demographics in terms of who plays what sports. You know, sports like lacrosse, both men's and women's, are very popular right now. Soccer, which didn't exist a long time ago, is very popular as well. So, we're kind of looking at all of our sports teams. So, it's not just about, you know, as Bob said, it's not just about the money, it's also about how do we maximize our limited space? So, one of the things we're looking at, and you know, Chris Storey's done a great job of putting together a usage analysis, how are the, how are the fields used, you know, by BAMS, by BUHS in the fall and in the spring? Another specific need is that right now, we play field hockey on the outfield of Tennyfield, we play soccer out there. And, you know, the size of the infield circle does make it so it's not acceptable for use as a BPA playoff or play-down game. So, that's another issue we're looking at. So, anything we do with the fields is, you know, in a larger context, look not just at Tennyfield, but looking at Tennyfield, looking at, do we need to think about resurfacing that of which field? You know, resurfacing that field would probably engender some concern from people who played on that field in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. But, you know, is that the answer? Do we put an artificial surface on that field? We do that, we've got the ability to play and practice on that field five days a week. It's a huge benefit. Then we look beyond that, we look at the practice field area, we look at the area, as you're looking from the grandstands, the area to the left, there's an area there that could be expanded. I don't know that we'd get a full field out of that. We did two cost analyses on that in 2010. Those cost analyses, one of them certainly gained more space because it involved a retaining wall built to the edge of the property line. Another one was a sloping earthen wall, and so that had pros and cons. And finally, the last thing we look at is we look at, you know, currently now, the Familari family has been incredibly generous and let us use VABECK field. And we've used VABECK for most of our women's sports and our BAMS sports as well. And, you know, that has been on the market a few times, it's on the market again. So, we look at VABECK field and we think about that as well. You know, what's the future of that? You know, so as Bob pointed out, we're in, we have limited flat land in Braddock Row, and so we're kind of looking at all of our options to see overall what is going to be best for all of our teams, BAMS, high school, male and female. So, you know, we're kind of looking at the whole big picture. And so, the grandstand is one part of that picture, but it's certainly not the whole picture.
Just want to look with you.
Sure.
And want to respect the relationship. And we have, we have resources, many of them played on these fields, many of them, great success. And they not only, and they have children here. So, they're really, really invested in it and want to work collaborating with you to affect a good, good result.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your concern and your input.
Can I just clarify a little bit as it relates to what, when this number will actually come up for approval or public involvement? I, it's, at this point, we, I can, I can say we don't really know for sure whether that would be considered part of ongoing capital expense, thereby being part of the budget, or it would be a bond issue, in which case it would be brought before the public as a, in a vote. But we haven't gotten to that point yet of saying, how would we handle it? How would we finance it, so to speak?
We'll, we'll commence and do our fundraising and try to, try to be prepared to participate. And I think it would be very helpful to us if we knew who in the, who on the board we can, we can collaborate with, whether it's you, Mr. Witter, or someone else. It'd be very, very helpful to us, I think.
The finance committee is certainly stands ready to, you know, we, shortly we'll announce the next finance meeting, which is coming up Thursday morning. So, I don't know that we'll have it on every agenda for finance because we meet frequently and we're getting into the budget session, but there's opportunity, that's an open meeting, and you know, all are welcome.
Well, we, I, let me just express this based on some of my experience. We really reach out to you in gratitude for what you're doing, for serving and all the work you do and all the pressures you have. And we truly respect that, and we want to support that. And we want to, we try to work with you, Bob, and have someone there at your meetings to try to go ahead. As I say, we start raising some money to do, participate in preliminary studies, whoever it takes to really make a sound decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, you can.
Well, I just wanted to maybe clarify a little bit of where we are in terms of the decision or, you know, starting to talk about a decision. It's really still at the finance level, and we, there's, there's been no motion. And actually, it hasn't been discussed in depth at this board level yet. So, you know, it's in the, it's in the early stages of development. I mean, we really, you know, we, something has to be done, as Steve very clearly pointed out. But I, I agree with you. I think good communication is going to be paramount in success, so we can come to the conclusion that is most logical.
Thank you.
All finance committee agendas are posted on the website, aren't they?
Yes. In addition to that, if you happen to see the last minutes from the last finance committee, that did have pretty detailed, sort of a detailed outline of where we are right now.
We participated in that meeting.
Yes.
And we made suggestions that we upload minutes.
Oh, yours, yours, we've had another meeting since then.
The ones that made suggestions for. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great. And then, just to, we'll keep working with our visitors. I appreciate you coming for, to talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I think that we were, we have, we collectively as this board is waiting for the WSCSU board, it's on their agenda, I think, to be making a decision for the whole WSCSU. And then, each individual board would have to ratify that, but they did, they have not made a decision yet about that. And hadn't made the decision prior to, and one of the things that was pointed out the last WSCSU meeting was that on the schedule, it was just listed as a school off day, it wasn't listed as any particular holiday, so that we can do that in the future or not. So, that's where that stands.
I think it was on the WSCSU agenda.
They just haven't made a decision.
Oh, which happened, occurred not last week, but the week before. And there was a motion made at this board to see if we would support the idea. I actually made the motion, but then it didn't, I withdrew the motion before we voted on it. So, you know, so we have been talking about it, so.
And at the SU meeting last week, it wasn't, they sort of, if I remember right, bounced back to the boards to get advice of what we think. So, I was, I was going to mention that in my finance committee, WSCSU Finance Committee report on that. So, I don't know if that's, today's the day to discuss that or not. I mean, there's not a full WSCSU board meeting for a while.
And it's not on, and it's not on our agenda.
It's not on our agenda tonight. Yeah, no, I was just, I was just going to report out, but that's, that was one of the things that was discussed at the SU meeting.
I want to thank you for coming, and a decision will be forthcoming, I guess.
Do we want to ask if he wants it, since he's here?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
If you want to, want to say something?
Yeah, I love it.
We have enough time to remember.
I don't have a whole lot to say, really. It's pretty simple what I'd like to say. What holidays put on the calendar sends a very strong message to students, to parents, to the community, basically. And, well, I think that the fact that it's been Columbus Day for a long time is what it is. We're at an opportunity, we have an opportunity now where the reality is that curriculum for most of our history being here has been extremely Eurocentric. That's something that's changing in a lot of ways and still has a lot of changing to do in a lot of ways. And that there are a lot of, like, deeply entrenched systems that will require a lot of changing and a lot of work. And then, there are some decisions like this, I feel, that are a fairly simple way to send a strong message, of which I think there will need to be curricular development and specific action to follow up on, but to send a strong message that Columbus is not necessarily an individual hero, that we would like to celebrate as heroic every year. He did represent the coming of Europeans to here, and we have a whole lot of opportunities to recognize European development and shockingly few to recognize the development and existence and resistance and persistence of Indigenous peoples. And to me, this seems like a fairly simple way to send a strong, powerful, and positive message of what we want to stand for. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. So.
Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question? The Braddock Row town boards had approved calling it Indigenous Peoples' Day. And the governor, Governor Shumlin, I believe, made a proclamation or a resolution, was it? Is it something that the, we should, I guess, Amara was bringing up the topic, and is it something that we would consider at BUHS as a proposal or something for the board to consider?
Well, what I, well, as, as people were talking about it, I put in my notes to put it on our agenda for our next meeting to have a more, a conversation with the board about it. Because I know that in each individual board after the WSCSU meeting is supposed to talk about it, and partly that was my mistake of not getting that onto our agenda for tonight. But also, the other piece to it is that because I'm curious as to how the other towns that send to here are going to also, are dealing with it.
And Putney ratified on Thursday.
Yeah, and I just found that out myself, too. So, Putney did that. So, that's, that's good, we're moving forward and, you know, I think that.
So, it makes sense if one or two are calling one thing and then.
Exactly. Exactly. So, I, like I said, I made myself a note to get it onto our agenda for our next meeting to have that, to have that more in-depth conversation.
Thank you.
Yep. So, is there a motion to enter consent agenda? Still moved. Seconded? Moving seconded? All right. All in favor for anything consent agenda? All right. So, let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
Well, unusually, the finance committee has not met since our last board meeting. We do have a meeting, as mentioned before, scheduled for this Thursday at eight o'clock in Central Office. And there will be further discussion of the long-term capital and campus improvement plan. And we are starting to get set up for budget and talk about the timeline that we have to, have to meet for the various budget reviews and public meetings and so forth. That'll be the main topics for Thursday.
Excellent. Okay, WSCSU Finance Committee.
As I said, we met on October 4th before the full SU meeting. We talked mainly about approving warrants and payrolls and then talking about the roles and responsibility for the finance committee that I've spoken to you before about. And then, at the SU meeting, the full SU meeting, we spent some, some time talking about that as well. And the issues arising there are, you know, continuing the sort of traditional finance committee actions that we've taken in the past, plus, you know, executive committee sort of things which, which we've also done in the past. And then, it was proposed to also bring in the negotiation committee in there as well. And so, we started having discussion at the SU level, and those were continuing. And, you know, I'm happy to hear any, any feedback as well. I mean, some of the pluses is streamlining, things are working well. Some of the minuses are, you know, is that too much for, for one committee to do? On the, then on the, on the third hand, is it's, you know, how many committees are there? Everybody who's on WSCSU is a, basically a committee assigned from the, from the six boards. And then, to be on the finance committee is also something else. So, do we want to have, you know, another, I mean, we have had a negotiation committee, and my understanding is, is last year, they didn't meet and in, there was a change, recent change in legislation where the Central Office has been, been spearheading the negotiations. And then, the negotiation committee actually met with the finance committee in the joint meeting and approved the negotiations that were taking place. So, you know, I, so there were questions, and there were questions about structure. Should there be a chair and a vice chair going there? And of course, at the WSCSU, we have a chair, but we don't have a vice chair. So, there's all, all sorts of structural sorts of discussions. And so, I don't know if you have any input that you want to bring forward. I'm not sure when, we're hitting our budget season and I, I don't, is, the budget thing, is that online at this point or not? So, we're going to be having a lot of budget meetings. I don't know how much time we're going to be having to talking about restructuring the committee. But anyways, if you have any comments on bringing in, you know, additional responsibilities to the finance committee. Speak now, and you don't have to forever hold your peace, you can speak now.
Does anybody have anything related to that that they want to add, or let us know now? Yeah, Sean?
Well, I, I was sort of aware of that from, I guess, from what you said at previous meetings. And it sort of seems to me that we're, we're on the cusp of some kind of a restructural change, whatever that may be, that the November 7th vote goes down and then the state comes in. So, I would almost say, might as well leave it as it is until, you know, the tides come in, whatever they are, and we'll all be floating. in, whatever they are, and we'll all be floating at the same level. And then change it at that time, because there's not much point in making some big, you know, Executive Committee change, Finance Committee change, and then within six months have to do it all again, because everything is different. You know, when you were speaking just now about all the responsibilities of all the different board members, you know, if it's reduced to a nine-member board, there's gonna have to be an entire restructuring, because there's not gonna be the manpower. So, who knows how that's all gonna work.
You're good?
One of the things that we've discussed that I would like to consider is, as issues come up, possibly personnel issues come up, having the Finance Committee be the representative committee instead of taking a hearing, an employee hearing, a question to the full WSCSU Board, being able to use the Finance Committee for those personnel issues. And that was something that came up at the WSCSU recent meeting, that with more employees under the WSCSU umbrella, there's more of a likely chance that there will need to be occasional personnel hearings.
And the W, the full WSCSU actually authorized the Finance Committee to, to handle those? And, and there's a tentative meeting set for Wednesday for, for that very purpose if, if we get that far. So, yeah, we are, we are going to the SU Committee for specific approval for, for doing those things.
Well, in spite of what might happen to us or what we might do to ourselves by July of 2019, the supervisory union structure would still, it might be modified, but it would still be in place. So I, I understand what you're saying, there's no rush to set it all up, but it always can be modified in terms of who's on the Finance Committee based on who's, who's on the new board, or if you're gonna decide to put some other folks on the committees. But I think this is to get streamlined the actual activities at this point, right?
Oh, there was, we also at the, unless I'm stealing your thunder, the, at the WSCSU, we did have a little bit of discussion at the Indigenous Persons' Day, and we also did a, oh, what was it called that we've got it here? But, but a session with a facilitator, the World Cafe, to, to sort of get to know each other and do address issues and reflect on, on what brought us to boards in the first place and what we like about our board experience and challenges that have come up and, you know, in a structured way where we moved around the rooms and recrooked and that sort of thing. So that was, that was nice, that was a good, a good process to do.
Depending on policy. Teacher Curriculum Committee.
Has not met.
BAMS Committee.
Has not met.
WRCC.
Has not met.
WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee has not met since our last meeting, and I got a, I got a text earlier today from Ian, who told me he couldn't be here tonight's meeting, and he said, he suggested respectfully that maybe it's time to take that off of our consent agenda list, which I was like, that's probably a good idea, because essentially there's possibly one more meeting before the public meetings, before the vote on November 7th. So I think that will get stricken from our, moving forward from consent agenda, because depending on what happens on November 7th, if it has to re, if it doesn't pass the vote, it has to reconvene, it's gonna reconvene in probably a different kind of way, depending on what happens in the vote.
Do you wanna remind us when those information meetings?
Sure. Dummerston is October 30th, and these are all from like 6 to 8 approximately. So Dummerston is October 30th, in Dummerston. Brattleboro is November 1st at Academy. Putney is November, November 2nd, and Guilford is November 6th. And then the vote is November 7th, so. We have those four information sessions coming up. Hopefully, a lot of the public come out to get questions answered and hear what's going on with that. And, and I know that multiple Act 46 Study Committee members will be at all of those meetings, 'cause at one of our past meetings, we planned who was gonna do which ones of those meetings, just so that there's plenty of us there to answer questions and help people understand our process for the last two years. Yes, Sean?
I would just like to say that if we take the Act 46 Study Committee off the agenda, we'll still have to have some place where we have updates. So would that be, I mean, where would that come in? Under new business or something?
Probably under new business, just to, or it might fall under an administrative report temporarily, until we know where we're at. Is there anything else for consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Still moved.
The second?
Second.
Move the second in. All in favor? Great. Alright, administrative reports. Since the administrators, for the first time in the last time I can remember, have switched up their seats on us, why don't we start at this end with BAMS and we can work our way through? Don't feel bad, it's okay. It's just, it's a good thing. I didn't do that. So why don't we start with BAMS?
Hi, everyone. I try to be brief, if you see me. A couple of past events, we had a parent night on October 4th. We did similar to an open house, but, and it was generally very successful, I thought. I would love to have 100% attendance, but probably at least half, half of that. But it was, it was a nice evening, we had, each team met with the parents in a separate space, there was four separate spaces for maybe 15, 20 minutes, talking about kind of general team kind of things and general school things. And then the parents were able to follow the schedule for their child around and spend about 10 minutes per classroom. And I was really happy with it. I always try to figure out what the ideal way to have parents come in and what will bring the parents in, so we continue to look at that, but overall, it was successful. I, I had a really positive email I just wanted to share about a couple of our teachers, and I'll, I'll leave it anonymous just because, just because. But I recently received an email regarding two of our teachers. Today, they offered, so this is a snippet from it. "Today they offered such gentle and kind support to a student in distress. It was late afternoon, and at that particular time, there's often temptation to, a temptation to phone in a bit. They did not. Their communication, however silent, was flawless and genuine. It's moments like this, and I'm glad these are the folks looking after our community's kids." So I just wanted to share that, 'cause it was really, it was really nice. And, yeah, I was proud of that email, we're really happy to receive it. Two of our teams, I think I mentioned last meeting, that we're doing interdisciplinary team units, it's part of our action plan, so trying to combine up, combine and do maybe project-based units where we're not just doing math at this moment, but we're working together across disciplines to do some type of project or learning. And there's some really great stuff happening right now. Team Taurus just finished a three-day kind of mini-unit as a team, and one of the days they spent in town in Brattleboro, they, they got to have a little, sit down with, with Town Manager Elwell and, and got to do some exploring and part of them, part of the group, they went up and hiked Mount Mont Pasticat. And then Team Leo has been involved in a different project, but it's culminating with students teaching lessons, and they have to present, they have to create their own lesson plans and, and teach each other. And so I'm really interested tomorrow, tomorrow during their core classes are the final lessons being taught, so pretty excited about it. They, they put a lot of work into it, and the collaboration and planning was pretty extraordinary, and I'm really happy with, with it. And if you were to walk in those classrooms and see the students, the engagement level was off-the-charts high, you know, they're just so, so busy, there's no chance for discipline issues, or limited chance for discipline issues during those times, because they really are enjoying what's happening. And Fall Sports are kind of wrapping up here soon, and it's amazing how fast, fast it comes and goes, but we're finishing up, we have four soccer teams, boys and girls soccer teams, and we have field hockey, football, it was modified football this year with the flags, and I think their last game is Thursday at home, so if you wanted to stop by and just see how that is, maybe worth, worth a moment. I'm hoping to stop by myself. And then cross-country running, hope I didn't miss any sports, but a lot of students participating in those things. And it's been a great fall weather-wise for, for sports, and it still feels like late September, so. That's all I had, any questions? Alright, thanks.
Let's move on to the high school.
Sure.
Well, thank you. So first up, this weekend, on Friday and Saturday at 7 o'clock, the BUHS players open their season with your good man Charlie Brown. Bob Kramsky has assembled an incredible cast for that production. And, you know, the Fall Play is a lot of times overlooked because of the attention we paid to the musical, but the Fall Play is usually really well-done and a lot of fun, so if you get the chance, like I said, 7 o'clock in the auditorium. A couple of weeks ago, we tried a new format for parent conferences, you'll recall. We, instead of doing the, everybody show up and wait in line, we did the scheduling online, and, you know, we asked parents for feedback on the way out, and by and large, the feedback was very positive. Parents really appreciate the new format, they like the idea that they can come in when it, when it's time to meet with their teachers. The other theme on the other side, though, was that there was not enough slots to meet with all the teachers, so we need to kind of look in, when we get to spring, about how we might modify either March 23rd or March 26th, which are half-days here, so we could somehow extend the length of time for our teachers to meet with parents.
I'm just gonna add to that, because I also reached out to a number of parents, and some parents contacted me, and the majority, not 100%, but the majority of parents were much appreciative, that they were respected enough not to have to stand in line in a hallway and wait and wait, and they had a time. And the teachers that I talked to also appreciated it, because they could feel better prepared for a parent walking in their room, and they knew that who was coming in when, and they could have work prepared to show parents, so all in all, it was a very positive change I think.
The other slightly negative feedback, and I love this one, it's great. Parents said, "I really look forward to seeing my friends in the hallways." Yeah, I like that, that's kind of cool.
Is that parents' child also lead to class?
You know, I think the food sales were down a little bit, but I'm hoping that an enterprising student group opens up a sandwich shop in the lobby, because I think they'd make a kill in it. You know, I think that would be a great thing to do. The vibe was very different, you know, for, for those of you that have been parents here, you know, you remember coming in and rushing to get from the gym to the socialist hallway upstairs, and, and the vibe is very, very different. I mean, it was very calm, relaxed, people would just come in when it was time, they'd sit outside, they'd go in. It was, it was kind of professional, who knew? Also this week, we gave the PSATs to 160 of our sophomores. I want to commend Gina Honorado and the counseling staff for that, that job. You know, a few years ago, we began offering the PSAT to all of our sophomores who want to take it, and that's been very successful. It was a chance for a student who may not be thinking about college to sit down, take the PSAT and say, "Well, maybe I am, you know, maybe, maybe I can do this, and maybe it's something I should look at." You know, because we want to keep options open for college or career, and it's just a good chance for them to take that test. On Wednesday, November 1st, we're going to be welcoming a team from other schools in the area, and it's something called an Integrated Field Review, I don't know if you're gonna talk about it.
I'm excited.
Okay, so I was gonna talk about the high school part of it. So there'll be a, a small team here at the high school, and they'll be doing interviews of parents, teachers, administrators, and other staff, and they'll also be walking around and looking at how we do, how we do our business. At the end of that, they'll write commendations and recommendations for the entire district, so they'll get together with the rest of the Supervisory Union visiting team and kind of do a summary for us. It feels a little bit like NEASK, and it is a little bit like NEASK, perhaps NEASK-like, but, you know, we're kind of looking forward to having people come in and kind of look at what we do. You know, we've changed a lot since the last NEASK report, so it'll be interesting to see what these folks see. And I do also want to commend Liz Lebec, Breland Ingelstab, and Nancy Johnston. They have been, they are the BUHS organizing team, they've done a really great job of getting things ready, doing the agenda. Tomorrow, they're gonna talk to the whole faculty about what it will look like, so everybody has a sense of what happens. Along those same lines, I'll be asking for board input probably in a couple of months. In March, our five-year accreditation report is due. Hard to believe it's been five years. We did a two-year report, now we have to do a five-year report, and we're gonna begin by looking at our commendations and recommendations from the report. When we did our two-year report, the folks at NEASK had certain criteria they wanted us to look at, and Nancy and I had a very frank conversation, saying, "We're moving in a, a direction for proficiency-based learning, which isn't covered by your standards. What do you want us to do?" And they were pretty supportive, they said, "You do what you need to do, and we'll work that out as we move along," so we'll see where that goes. On November 2nd, we will be offering a parent forum, Proficiency 101, a chance for parents to come to the high school. I'll be talking a little bit about the background, our journey to move to proficiency, where we are now, and to look ahead at what proficiency may look like in the future. But it's a chance for parents to kind of learn those 10 principles that the board learned about, a chance to talk about retake policies and why we do those, and a chance to look at grading scheme and transcripts and talk about how proficiency-based transcripts are looked at by colleges and other institutions, so certainly welcome.
What time is that?
Well, I have to talk to you about that, it was supposed to be 6:30. I don't want to interfere with the Putney vote.
Were you in the Putney meeting?
The Putney meeting.
And they actually are having a forest vote that night, I believe, yes.
Right, so, you know, I picked that date because it's between sport seasons. That's why we picked November, the first week in November, because people don't have their hockey skates and basketballs out yet, and they put away their soccer balls, so. Finally, TCC, last meeting, met with the Yats Group. I want to give you a follow-up, that they did approve, the faculty looked at the survey that they want to give, and they said, "That looks great." So that survey will be going out to all students and staff on October 29th, I believe, during school. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Career Center. Thanks, Ricky.
So updating on some events coming up for the Career Center. The fourth year program will participate in a soils competition at the end of this week. As we all know, soil consists of organic matter, minerals, water, and air, and a hole is dug, and there are various horizons to soil, and our students have a long, storied history of being very successful in this competition under the leadership of Errol Nelson, and I did have the opportunity to visit their kind of soil studying site out in West Brattleboro, and as you see, I garnered some knowledge. So we wish them luck. We have a September Elks Student of the Month, who is Caitlin Fenstermaker. I'm not sure where Fenster is, but perhaps it's a long-forgotten career. But nevertheless, she's a digital arts student, and she was recommended through the filmmaking program and through our tech English program. And Caitlin Fenster is described as an enthusiastic student who's displaying leadership and of a very high skill level in our Adobe Creative Suite platform. So we celebrate Caitlin. On the announcements front, the Hideaway Restaurant, as part of our culinary, as part of our culinary program, is open on Friday for lunch from 11:30 to 1:20. With some young women, participate in the Women Can Do Conference recently, I'm not sure if that was announced at the last meeting, but we. if that was announced at the last meeting, but we took several vans full up to Vermont Tech for that, which like actually came along with some, you know, very exciting events. We're finishing up on a project that is a collaboration between the construction trades and the, and the port culture program that is fencing in some of our garden areas, getting it up to code, following Digsafe procedures, and generally having a pretty, you know, good learning process. And I think that brings us up to date for the last several weeks.
Yes?
I just have one question. You spoke about this young student Caitlin in digital arts and so forth.
Yes.
I thought it would be good just to have a plug to make sure that she's aware of the EAME scholarship. And if she isn't, and here's another question, is a career student eligible for the EAME scholarship, or is it just BUHS?
It's a BUHS scholarship.
It's a BUHS.
But Jane is a, Caitlin is a BUHS student.
Yeah, so it would still be applicable. So I don't, I don't know what, you know, what grade she's in, but the EAME scholarship is a fantastic opportunity if somebody is interested in going into arts of any kind.
So if like that's EAM, does that stand for someone?
It's a person's.
Yes. Yeah, I think Steve would say.
It's a gentleman in town.
Oh, okay.
He made a very generous request.
Okay.
I think we had, there are three scholarships, is that right? Three scholarships a year?
Yes.
Yeah. So last year, it was, I think we had 11 applications, so there were definitely three awards, and it's a fantastic opportunity.
I'll definitely forward that for EAME. Thank you.
Great. Excellent. Central Office.
Sure. So as Steve talked about, Integrated Field Review, in addition to having teams come to see us on November 1st, our first team is going out tomorrow. And we had put together approximately 20 people that went through some training of things to look at when they go on a visit, questions to ask, so our first team will go out tomorrow. I think I had mentioned earlier, each person goes out on a visiting team one time, so they are actually not missing a lot of, a lot of time from their classrooms and a lot of teaching time. As Steve said, our visit is November 1st. At that time, there will be people from other school districts in the area, visiting, talking with parents, talking with teachers, school visits. There'll be a central office visit. We actually start here at Brattleboro Union High School, sort of as an, with an orientation.
Could I ask just a question on that? I don't normally do that. Is Ian Keel BCTV camera? This team, is it only Vermont districts that come visit? Okay, just curious.
It's all districts in our area, so Wyndham Northeast, Wyndham Southwest, Windsor, and Mill River, I think, are in our area.
But just to be clear, it's a project that's Vermont-based?
It's Vermont-based.
Sort of sharing knowledge?
Yes. Yeah, looking at the educated, educated quality standards.
Thanks.
At the end of this week, the VSA, the VSVA conference, Thursday and Friday, I'll be there. There are a couple of board members from, from around us, Putney and Brattleboro, at least, two board members that will be joining me there. And starting tomorrow, the Dimensions and Social Change class will start their first workshops with middle school leadership teams, and tomorrow, I believe it's a group from Dummerston, will be coming, working with Ashley Netto's students. I've been joining Ashley Netto's class once a week to get ready for this and look at some of the things they're going to be working on, kindness and empowering students. So those start tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you. I don't have anything specific to report, so that finishes administrative reports. We don't have anything listed under unfinished business unless I'm forgetting something and didn't put it on there. Don't see anything. And under new business, I asked to put on WSCSU board meeting, and Russ talked about it a little bit, but I wanted to thank Lyle and whoever else on her team helped put together that, many of us were there, but that, the activity that we did, the World Cafe activity that we did, that was really enlightening. Again, I know, I knew most of the people in the room, but it got, it gave me an opportunity to connect with some folks from other boards in a different way, in a better way, and some folks from central office staff, because I ended up in, you know, ended up in groups of different people at different times. So it was a really, it was a great thing. So thank you very much for that. And I remember walking in to the meeting last, after that meeting, was a board member from another board, and we were walking from the parking lot together, and we both had, we both had kind of made the comment about, "Why are we meeting up here?" And then it made sense why we were meeting up there, why we met at the Amark College, and we weren't meeting in one of, one of the schools in the district, to be on a spot that was nobody's spot, it was everybody's spot. It was kind of nice. And it felt, it felt really good. I don't know if anybody else that was there wanted to chime in also about either the activity or the meeting itself, but.
What struck me kind of was that the same recurring themes, that we're all kind of on the same page in a way. Not that everybody's ideas were identical, but there was a common threads that ran through in every, every discussion group. That's usually an indicator of, as a group, you're kind of headed in the right direction.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, great. So that's why I wanted to put it on here, because I wanted to officially thank Lyle and her team for putting that together, but also I thought it was a great activity to do and to connect. So. Great. Is there anything else to come under new business tonight? Let's see.
Mister Chairman?
Yes?
Hearing none, I wolf in the dirt.
She's back.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moving seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right, we are adjourned. Sometime will, you have to second.